Okay, good evening, everybody. The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Beloit City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
All councilors are present.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand at this time?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item three is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. The first proclamation, 3A, is a proclamation declaring May 9th through the 15th of 2021 as National Police Week.
And Chief Andre Sales is here to accept the proclamation?
Yes.
Vice President Keyes, whenever you're ready. Actually, let's wait till he gets up here.
So whereas police services provided in our city play an integral part in the everyday life of our community members, and whereas the dedicated men and women who, on a daily basis, protect us, defend us, and serve as guardians are highly trained and committed to public safety, and whereas the support, trust, and cooperation of an involved community is vital to the efficient and effective operation of community policing practices and programs, and whereas the health, safety, and quality of life in this community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them, and whereas the City of Beloit Police Department incorporates modern-day community policing practices, focusing on their roles as guardians by proactively engaging in our community to create unity, build and sustain trust, and enhance the overall safety of the City of Beloit, and whereas all members of the Beloit, the City of Beloit Police Department, recognize and take seriously their sworn duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, protecting all against violence and disorder, and working in partnership to enhance public safety, and whereas we proudly honor and pay tribute to the ultimate sacrifice of past City of Beloit law enforcement officers while gratefully acknowledging the daily sacrifices of our present officers. Now, therefore, the City Council, President of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as National Police Week in the City of Beloit, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to appreciate the contributions which these officers make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life, presented this third day of May, 2021.
Well, thank you guys very much. Like I've been saying, I look forward to continuing the sustainability of the Beloit Police Department and making it a modern police department that respects all with equity and justice for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation 3B is declaring May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, Stronger Together.
And we have DPW Director Laura Williamson here to accept the proclamation.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Beloit, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without all the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community, and whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in Beloit to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, and whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Weeks sponsored by the American Public Works Association with the theme "Stronger Together." Now, therefore, the City Council President of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the City of Beloit, and urge all community members to recognize the substantial contributions made by our public works employees to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of Beloit residents, and furthermore, the City Council President encourages the community to join with Public Works Department employees from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, May 15th, 2021, at the downtown Beloit Farmers Market as they showcase equipment and explain the services and programs of the Public Works Department, presented this day, third day of May, 2021.
Thank you. On behalf of the department, this means a lot to the entire staff, and I would welcome you all to come out and see us on May 15th. We're very excited about being there. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Item 3C is a proclamation declaring May 2nd through the 8th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
And I believe our Clerk Treasurer, Lori Stoller, will accept this proclamation.
Whereas the office of the municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the municipal clerk's office provides the professional link between residents, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk's office serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, overseeing the local elections process, maintaining public records, and attending and taking minutes of city council meetings, and whereas the municipal clerk's office strives to continually learn and develop professionally through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the professional leadership organization. Now, therefore, the Beloit City Council recognizes May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Beloit, Wisconsin, and extends appreciation to Lorena Stotler, City Clerk and Treasurer, for all of her staff and all of her staff, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent, presented this day, third day of May, 2021.
Well, thank you. It feels weird to be on this side of the microphone. I'm going on my sixth year as your clerk and my fourth year as your treasurer, and it's really been my honor, but for this particular one, Jaleen Arons, the deputy clerk, many of the reasons why your packets are complete and everything is organized, she'll be retiring and going on to that fun stage in life, so I would like to just dedicate this proclamation to her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item 3D is a proclamation declaring May 16th, 2021, as No Menthol Sunday.
And do we have a rub from Youth to Youth here today? Okay.
The proclamation reads, whereas No Menthol Sunday is a national observance day led by the Center for Black Health and Equity and supported locally by the Wisconsin African-American Tobacco Prevention Network, Southwest Alliance for Tobacco Prevention, and Youth to Youth for Change. Whereas menthol is a minty cooling flavor that helps mask the harshness of cigarette smoke and e-cigarette aerosol, allows smokers to inhale more deeply, aids in tobacco addiction, and makes smoking harder to quit, and whereas menthol cigarettes are the most popular tobacco product among African-Americans, and whereas over 42% of Wisconsin adults smoke or formerly smoked menthol cigarettes, while nationally, 40% of cigarette smokers aged 12 and older smoke menthols, and whereas the 2021 theme of No Menthol Sunday is a new day, and an opportunity to help build tobacco-free communities and a healthier future, and to advocate for a healthier future that makes menthol and tobacco-related disease a thing of the past, and whereas when it comes to protecting our young people and our most vulnerable communities, we must not grow weary or turn a blind eye, and whereas No Menthol Sunday encourages faith leaders to talk about the importance of living healthy lives, and whereas No Menthol Sunday acknowledges that tobacco is a major contributor to the three leading causes of death for African-Americans, that vaping and smoking can weaken the immune system and put individuals of all backgrounds at higher risk of severe illness or death from COVID-19, and whereas No Menthol Sunday recognizes people of faith and the important role they play in creating change by supporting those who want to quit, and whereas the City of Beloit joins Wisconsin African-American Tobacco Prevention Network, faith leaders, and public health leaders in an inner-faith effort to say no to the sale of mentholated and flavored tobacco products. Now, therefore, the City Council President of Beloit does hereby proclaim Sunday, May 16th, 2021, to be No Menthol Sunday in the City of Beloit, and calls upon all community members to increase their awareness of the negative effects of tobacco use in order to promote the health and well-being of all, presented this third day of May, 2021. Clinton Anderson, City Council President.
And item 3E is a proclamation recognizing May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as Teacher Appreciation Week.
And we have our Superintendent Dan Keyes here and our Communications Director Monica Kristopka here to accept the proclamation.
Whereas school district of Beloit teachers are resilient, creative, strong, and dedicated to their student success, and whereas school district of Beloit teachers are committed and passionate about engaging students in dynamic and creative learning opportunities while caring for their social and emotional well-being, and whereas school district of Beloit teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, creating positive and inclusive learning environments, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching, motivating and mentoring, leading and encouraging our students, and whereas school district of Beloit teachers make a difference in the lives of our students and families through their ability to continue to teach and care for students despite the many challenges this pandemic has brought with it, and whereas the school district of Beloit teachers inspire every student to succeed in life and contribute to an ever-changing world, and whereas school district of Beloit teachers play an important and vital role in developing and molding the lives of children in our community, and whereas our community recognizes and supports school district of Beloit teachers in educating 6,400 children in our district. Now, therefore, the City Council proclaims May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Beloit, and strongly encourages all members of our community to join us in personally expressing appreciation to the school district of Beloit teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work, presented this third day of May, 2021. Clinton Anderson, Council President.
Thank you very much for this proclamation on behalf of the teachers in the school district of Beloit. I thank you for the wonderful and continued partnership with the city. As you know, we exist as a school district because our community exists, and we look forward to having you all come to our buildings once this health crisis has passed, and again, we are Beloit proud.
Item 3F is a proclamation declaring May 5th, 2021, as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Day.
And we do not have anyone to accept the proclamation, so Vice President Keyes, whenever you're ready.
Whereas according to a 2016 report from the National Institute of Justice, 84% of American Indian and Alaskan Native women have experienced violence in their lifetime, more than half of whom have experienced sexual violence, and whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, homicide is the third-leading cause of death among American Indian and Alaskan Native women between the age of 10 and 24 years, and the fifth-leading cause of death for the American Indian and Alaskan Native woman between 25 and 34 years of age, and whereas in 2016, the National Crime Information Center reported nearly 6,000 cases of missing American Indian and Alaskan Native women and girls, yet the U.S. Department of Justice was tracking only 119 cases in the U.S. Missing Persons Database, and whereas no reliable data exists on the actual number of missing indigenous women and girls in the United States. Instants of violence continue to be directed against indigenous women living on both reservations and in urban areas at high rates, and whereas the Urban Indian Institute, Health Institute, found there have been at least six cases of missing and murdered tribal women and girls in Wisconsin in a 2018 report, and whereas Wisconsin has been ranked as sixth in the nation in sex trafficking, according to the Human Trafficking Institute, with urban centers being the hubs, in the I-90, 94 corridor, which has led to many Native women and girls being open to exploitation by traffickers, and whereas the Wisconsin State Department of Justice formed the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women Task Force in 2020 to collect and study data and identify solutions, and whereas Department of Interior Secretary Deb Holland created the Missing and Murdered Unit within the Bureau of Indian Affairs Office of Justice Services to collect and analyze data and to collaborate with different law enforcement agencies and government agencies, and whereas we commemorate the lives of missing and murdered Indian, American Indian, and Alaskan Native women and girls whose cases are documented and undocumented in public records and media, and demonstrate solidarity with the families of the victims in light of these tragedies. Now, therefore, the Beloit City Council proclaims May 5th, 2021, to be Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Day in the City of Beloit. This is a day we mourn and call attention to the many missing and murdered Native women and girls, as well as those who have experienced violence and assault, and resolve to act to prevent further victimization, presented this third day of May, 2021. Clinton Anderson, Council President.
Item four is public hearings. There are none this evening, so that leads us to item five, public comments.
We've reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests of this meeting, but may refer a speaker to a staff member. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to the meeting. Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted to you?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have one comment. It comes from Jenny Hoopel, 1300 Strong Avenue. It reads, regarding the proposal to add more buildable lots to the Darefold Estate neighborhood by the NG Darepath LLC, what would the lots be replacing? We need all the agricultural land and wild land we can get, especially when taking into consideration the looming threat of global climate change, the council's own resolution for the city to achieve carbon neutrality. There are a heck of a lot of empty homes and lots in the city that should be renovated for expanding outlying subdivisions. It moves in the direction of carbon neutrality for our citizens to live in the city close to where the amenities are and to leave the green, growing land as it is, so it can continue to sequester carbon in the soil and to be a haven for biodiversity. Please do not approve this proposal to add more buildable lots to that subdivision. We should be focusing on rebuilding Beloit's infrastructure, not expanding out. That ends written comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any members of the public who did not fill out a form that would wish to speak tonight? Second call, any public comments? Third call, any public comments? Public comment is now closed. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item six is a consent agenda, and all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any council member like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Forbeck, is there a second? Second by Duncan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Item seven is licenses. There are none this evening. Item eight is ordinances. 8A is consideration of ordinance 3701 to amend Section 6.3.4 Sub D of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of Code of General Ordnances of the City of Beloit pertaining to attached garage floor area, and this is second reading.
Since this is a second reading, I will only have the, I will have Community Development Director Christensen speak if we request it, but before that, is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Moved by Pruschel, is there a second? Second by Levy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 8B is consideration of ordinance number 3707 to establish no parking regulations in the 1100 block of North Street. This is also second reading.
Since it's a second reading, I will entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Levy, second by Pruschel. Any discussion?
I would like to compliment the citizens who came forward with this proposal. We've ever seen from the citizens who came forward with proposals. Commented on this since our last meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, make sure that's right.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Pruschel. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 8C is consideration of ordinance number 3709 to create 1802 Sub 15 Sub R of the Code of General Ordnances of the City of Beloit authorizing outdoor vending for an event sponsored by Rising Queens, Inc. in Riverside Park. This is first reading.
And DPW Director Laura Williamson will present this item.
Good evening. You have before you a request to make a ordinance change to allow for an event to sponsor Rising Queens, presents the Juneteenth celebration at Riverside Park to allow them to have outdoor vending. Tracy Dumas is in the audience today as well. This is going to be a free event. It's going to be on June 19th. It's proposed for June 19th. It's open to the public. At this, they will be having some vending. It will be in the lawn. We've also been through the EOC. They've provided a plan for how there will be social distancing. Masks will be worn. No alcohol will be presented at this. This will be prepackaged items, as well as a backpack giveaway. So with that, any questions? Happy to answer any.
Before we do that, can we have a motion to either, is that to suspend, suspend the rules or lay it over?
I'm going to suspend the rules for this, so...
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, from Levy, second from Pruschel. So at this time, we'll have some discussion? Yes, Councilor Pruschel? Councilor Levy, do you have a question, too?
And that was one of the things that why I wanted to move it to a second reading so they can move forward, and I also did get my question asked, I asked in a previous session, that last year I know that there was another group that did it as well, but in speaking with someone, they're not, probably not going to be doing it this year, so I want to make sure that we don't double up on the things and so have two events like scheduled the same weekend, so I'm glad that the two ladies are stepping up to do this. So I want to make sure that we continue to do this every year, so that's why I wanted to just double-check and make sure that the group that did it last year, that we won't be having two events scheduled the same weekend, and I see that that's not the issue. So I think we need to move forward with this, as Mark said, to make sure that they can get stuff out, advertise, and start working on it versus coming back to our next meeting and getting it approved then, so...
Any other discussion? Yes, Councilor Forbeck?
I have a question. For people to help get backpacks.
I think if we ask the organizer here how, you know, about the backpack, maybe she can address that.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having Rising Queens, Inc. here. Yes, we do on our website, we are advertising for donations for backpacks, and also on our Facebook webpage, we're advertising for donations for backpacks. Yes, thank you.
If I can just have a follow-up before she leaves the podium, just a quick question? I was trying to catch her, she's like, I'm out of here. It's only, you're only on TV and thousands of people are watching you, that's okay. When is the deadline to donate the backpacks, is there?
June 1st.
Okay, so we wanted to...
So we can get them put together.
Okay, so are you just looking for empty backpacks or backpacks with supplies in them?
No, we're looking for the supplies. We bought the backpacks.
So you're just looking for supplies?
Yep.
Okay. And so June 1st, do we drop this stuff off someplace or...
Yes, yep. It would be at my home residence.
Okay. If we can get that somewhere to the city manager, your address, and we can do that, and then what I'm going to do here, really unscripted, but each year, the council usually donates backpacks, so we usually have a backpack drive that we donate to.
Okay.
So instead, since we didn't do the backpack donation, I'm going to ask the councils if we could pick up some supplies and make sure we get it to this individual, to this young lady before her event, and I think you said by June 1st?
Yes.
Either pick up some supplies or just make a donation, because we usually do that every year, so I think we need to continue that tradition on, so...
It's a great comment. Any other comments? Yes?
Together, you and your committee, because this is certainly an important event for the City of Beloit. For those that don't know, it's the time when the slaves were, it was the end of slavery and emancipation for people of color, so I just want to say thank you for hosting such an important event in our Beloit community, which will bring all of us together as one. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys.
So with that, we had a motion to suspend the rules. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, on to the merits. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved by Levy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pruschel. Any, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Under appointments this evening, there is one that is a follow-up to your earlier interview. It's to the Police and Fire Commission. It's Nailah Adama, replacing Ralph Berkeley to a term ending April 30th, 2026.
And do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Blakely, is there a second? Second by Forbeck. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
9B are the Council President Committee Board Commission appointments. To the ABLCC, Mark Pruschel, to the Appointment Review Committee, President Anderson, Vice President Keyes, to the Business Improvement District, Clinton Anderson, to the Community Development Authority, Kevin Levy, and Nancy Forbeck, to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Regina Duncan, to the Equal Opportunities Commission, Nancy Forbeck, to the Landmarks Commission, Sherry Blakely, to the Library Board, Sherry Blakely, to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Nancy Forbeck, to the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Brittany Keys, to the Plan Commission, Mark Pruschel, to the Traffic Review Committee, Mark Pruschel, and to the Gulf Committee, Mark Pruschel.
Welcome to retirement.
So with that, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Levy?
I'll second.
Here's a second by Duncan. Any discussion? Before we vote, I just want to say it again, thank you for making this so easy. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate it. We have a great team. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 10 is Councilor Activities and Upcoming Events.
We will start with Vice President Keyes.
Thank you, President Anderson. I do not have a report from the Parks, Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, but I did, do want to share, some of my recent events include attending the first outdoor farmers market, and it was windy but lovely, and I highly recommend everyone to attend. It'll be every Saturday, 9 to 12 through October. Last Thursday, I attended the YWCA Rock County Virtual Stand Against Racism Event. And then, the last two weeks, I participated in an extended Earth Week, celebrating Earth Day, working to walk for my commute and pick up litter along the way, and this included participating in the Welty Environmental Earth Week Challenge. And so I want to thank the Welty Environmental Center and all who participated. And in a one-week span, 85 bags of trash were picked up throughout the city by over 55 people. And there's great photos of these successes that can be found on their Facebook site, and I want to highlight three groups, student groups who participated, our Beloit Fresh Start Students, Even Start Students, and the Beloit Memorial High School Environmental Club. So thank you to everyone who helped celebrate Earth Day and helped keep Beloit beautiful and healthy, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Next one is Councilor Levy.
I'll report.
Okay, Councilor Blakely.
Yes, I want to invite everybody in Beloit to stop by Beloit Public Library this month to view the special exhibit they have on Memorial Day. Memorial Day came into being right after the Civil War. So the exhibit shows pictures and historical elements, starting with the Civil War and going all the way through the war in Afghanistan. It's seven large panels, and it's pretty fascinating, even, either for yourself or perhaps your whole family, for children, definitely. It's a combination of pictures and just a little bit of written narrative that explains to people who don't know what these wars were for. And Memorial Day, of course, honors all our fallen soldiers who have given their lives for America. The exhibit was created by a veteran, which makes it even more important. Susan Park, a veteran, created the exhibit, and it's really worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Duncan?
First of this evening, I want to thank our city manager, all our city staff, and councilors from the bottom of my heart for the kindness shown to me at our last council meeting, as I was preparing to pass the gavel. It was very thoughtful and a moment that I will always remember. It is truly an honor to serve with all of you. That said, we had the organizational city council meeting to elect our new officers on April 20th. So congratulations to our new council president, Clinton Anderson, and our new vice president, Brittany Keys. I am confident that we will all work together and will continue to move our city forward. Now for my activities. On April 22nd, I watched the virtual YWCA 2021 Stand Against Racism Event. There were a panel of public health professionals, advocates, and trailblazers who addressed racism as a public health crisis. If you missed it, please go to the YWCA Facebook page. Also, I want to give a special shout-out to Angela Moore, the YWCA Executive Director, and Amy Levy, the Racial Justice Director, the YWCA staff, and all those involved with this effort. Together, we can and must do the work to improve racial inequities for all of us. Additionally, on April 29th, I attended the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation Finance and Audit Committee Meeting. Special thanks to Economic Development Director Jennifer Hall and Mindy Koontz, our Administrative Assistant, for their hard work. And Mindy, I hope I didn't screw your name up. I hope I didn't mess it up. Then also, so I just want to thank them for their hard work. Also, congratulations to the City of Beloit Department of Public Works Department and Mike Furger, the Forestry Operations Supervisor, for his commitment to urban forestry management, and for our distinguished recognition as a 2020 Tree City USA by the Arbor Foundation, and for the 33rd year. This is a big deal and so important to our community, so kudos to our team. I can't wait to the next Arbor Day ceremony. We have lots of great things happening in Beloit, including the farmers market, which will be open downtown each Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and it'll run until October, so be sure to join in the fun. Lastly, I want to remind everyone to please be mindful, please, please be mindful of the construction projects going on around our city, especially at the I-3990 and I-43 Wisconsin-81 interchange. Let's practice patience and drive carefully and safely. This ends my report for this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Pruschel?
No report.
Okay. Councilor Foreback?
No report.
Wow, okay. So on to my report. Last week, I was at the Beloit Farmers Market, and volunteering with me was Councilor Pruschel. We also saw Vice President Keyes. I was literally holding the booth down, and I mean literally because it was windy, but it's really a great place to support our vendors and our downtown businesses. Please go check it out. There are 71 vendors there now, which is a vast improvement from, I believe it was the 27 we had to start with at the beginning of last year, so go support our vendors. Also, last week, I gave blood. Please consider donating blood through the American Red Cross. It was very quick, and I can tell you that as someone who is not a fan of needles, I did not feel a thing. It was, I was over in about 45 minutes. I was in and out. Please do it, you could save up to three lives. And that ends my report.
There is no city manager's presentation this evening, so Item 12 is Reports From Boards and City Officers. 12A is Consideration of Resolution 2021-61 Approving a Subdivision Development Agreement Between the City of Beloit and NG Deerpath Land LLC.
Community Development Director Julie Christensen.
A subdivision development agreement outlines the responsibilities of a developer with respect to installing public improvements required by the city. Those public improvements will become publicly-owned infrastructure and therefore must be constructed to certain standards and specifications. This development agreement for NG Deerpath Land LLC is required by the subdivision ordinance, so we have negotiated the attached development agreement, which is included in your packet. In Article 1, it requires the developer to construct the street curb and gutter, water mains, sewer mains, streetlights, sidewalks, and street trees at their cost. The plans for those public improvements must be approved by the city engineer prior to construction, and I think the city engineer has almost completed that review at this point. Article 2 outlines fees to be paid by the developer related to the inspections and permit fees, and Article 3 outlines the process for acceptance of the infrastructure once it is complete. Article 4 of the development agreement requires that the developer provide the city with a security instrument in a form acceptable to the city, and Article 5 outlines the required permits. And then the last two articles are the legal requirements, public responsibility, and other miscellaneous provisions. The final plat cannot be recorded, which was approved tonight, which, and that's what creates the lots until this development agreement has been approved by the city council and executed, and all other conditions of preliminary and final plat approval have been met. And we're gradually working through that project, and this developer is really excited to get under construction with his infrastructure. He wants to get going in May, and so this is on your agenda for action tonight.
Thank you. Before we have any questions, is there a motion to approve?
Summ.
Moved by Pruschel, is there a second? Second by Foreback. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify a few things. Okay. These are, this is an existing development that's in final plat. This is the last eight lots in this area, and they're, it's a creative way of solving a years-long, decades maybe, long development dead end there because they couldn't figure out how to get through the existing, like preserves all the woodlands, many, three large oaks, I think, and, and the natural lay of the land that's already there, the drainage that's already there. So it's a very friendly development, and it's taken a long time to get there. I remember a couple times down the road, there were proposals to do something that nothing was, was going to work, and desperately needed some development to finalize that, that section. That's good to see. So I just wanted to clarify that that's all, nothing new here, nothing additional, it's just finishing up what was there from 20, 30 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I just want to thank you and the staff for our work with this project and for all the renderings and information that was provided in our board reports, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Final item is adjournment.
To move.
Moved by Levy. Second by Vice President Keyes. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Well, it's all right. Good job.